Could everyone please take a seat? Thank you.
I'm on Town of Concord guest.
Henry's on the line.
Okay, this is a joint public hearing of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, so we need a call to order, roll call for the Select Board.
Sure, Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Ms. Bates, I believe is in transit. Mr. Dane, I see him on Zoom. Okay, I think I called that present.
Okay, Henry, can you please log out and log in again? But we'll mark you as present.
Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, present. So we do have a quorum.
Right, Finance Committee, okay. Chris Reynolds, present.
Dean Banfield, present.
Peggy Briggs, present.
Kathy Kukalo, present.
We have two members, potentially three members on Zoom. So Dee Ortner.
Present.
Amrit Kumar.
Present.
Eric Dahlberg.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Teri Ackerman. I am the Chair of the Select Board. This is a joint public hearing between the Concord Select Board and the Concord Finance Committee. I'm joined by the Chair of the Finance Committee, Chris Reynolds. And in addition to our two boards, we're joined tonight by the Concord Middle School Building Committee and the Concord Public School Committee, the Superintendent of Public Schools, the Director of Sustainability, and the Town's Chief Financial Officer. So tonight, we will hear some presentations, followed by question and answers. First, we will have a joint presentation by the co-chairs of the Middle School Building Committee, Dawn Goriello and Pat Nelson, and the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Hunter. Next, we will hear from Director of Sustainability, Amanda Cohn. And she will be followed by Chief Financial Officer, Carrie LaFleur. We also have in attendance tonight the Town Owners Project Manager, Ian Parks, and Architect Lorraine Finnegan. I really want to take a moment to thank all of these individuals and their entire teams for the incredible amount of work that it's taken so far and the amount of work they still have yet to go to provide the town with a new middle school. We are grateful to all of you for your service. At this time, I would like everyone in the room to please silence your cell phones. And I would also like to announce that today, the Board of Health strongly advised that everyone wear a face covering while indoors in public settings. Right now, I have lowered mine so I can speak, but then when I'm not speaking, I will put it back on like this. Okay, also, when you're speaking, we're told, please go right up to the microphone. If you're about like this, it will not pick you up. Okay, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to hear from the public on Article One of the Special Town Meeting. Our Special Town Meeting, as you know, is scheduled for Thursday, January 20th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the high school. The snow day is the following Thursday, January 27th, at 7:00 PM, also at the high school. Article One seeks voter approval to appropriate a sum not to exceed $103,700,000 for the construction of a new middle school to be located at 835 Old Marlboro Road, the current site of the Sandborne Middle School. Chair Chris Reynolds and I have decided on the format for this public hearing in order to maximize public participation during the COVID pandemic. We are meeting in person and over Zoom. The meeting is being live broadcast by Media Man, Minuteman Media Network, a tongue twister, on the town's webpage and on the government channel, Channel 9. This meeting is also being recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Once the presentations are complete, we will take questions, first from members of the Select Board, then members of the Finance Committee, and then members of the public. After hearing from the boards, we will alternate questions between those in person and those on Zoom. There might be many questions, so we want to ask each speaker, please try to limit your question to no more than one minute. As a reminder, please state your name and address when you are recognized by the chair. And if you're here in person, please speak right up to the microphone. And if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand in front of your camera or select the raise hand function. Finally, as we all know, Concord has a long history of respectful and thought-provoking public dialogue. We expect no less from our participants tonight. We really want to hear from you. Please join the conversation, but please do so in a respectful manner, typical of our long Concord tradition. Okay, Madam FinCom Chair, do you have some additional comments?
I do, thank you. Welcome, everybody. So glad that you could be with us tonight, both the folks on Zoom and the folks with us here in the townhouse. As you might imagine, FinCom has been very interested in this project since its inception. It's a large item of financial matter to the town, and FinCom's role is to advise town meeting on such matters. And so, as part of our deliberations, this is a very important part of that process. So we've been following the project. We understand the cost estimates. We understand the size of the building, the trade-offs that have been made. But one of the important components that we'd like to hear tonight is from you. What are your questions and comments with respect to this project? And that will inform our deliberations on this matter. So thank you very much in advance for your participation.
Thank you. And at this time, before we open the public hearing, we'd like to hear from our moderator, Carmen Reese.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carmen Reese, 52 Devon Street, and I'm the Town Moderator. I just wanted to say a few words about what to expect at Special Town Meeting. As Teri mentioned, there is a strong mask advisory from our Board of Public Health right now. In addition, Massachusetts is a high transmission area in every county, including ours. We don't expect that to be any different in January. In fact, all projections are that it will be worse. That said, we will hold town meeting. If the Special Town Meeting that we had for the high school is any indication, we will have a very large turnout. At the high school Special Town Meeting, we had 1,600 voters in attendance. We are opening three areas of the high school to accommodate folks. We will be using the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and the auditorium. And that should give us seating for somewhere around 1,800 individuals, perhaps 1,900 individuals, so that if we have 1,600, there's still a little bit of space to spread out. And if we have fewer than 1,600, there's lots of space to spread out. So we'll encourage folks to do that on their own when they arrive and sit. And we will encourage everyone to wear a mask. And we will have a special seating area for those people who cannot or do not wish to wear a mask, which will be in the bleachers in the gymnasium. Check-in will be in the cafeteria as usual. And we'll have some more specifics on the town website for you on specifically where accessible seats will be located, where hearing assistance devices can be found, and where our closed captioning service from a stenographer will be located. So we look forward to seeing you all at Special Town Meeting.
Thank you very much, Carmen. And again, please, everyone mute your cell phones or devices at this time.
Teri, point of order. The Concord School Committee and the Middle School Building Committee posted this as public meeting.
Thank you, thank you, right. Okay, we need a call to order for the school committee.
So a call to order the school committee, and I'll take attendance. Cynthia Rennie, present. Mr. Booth, if you can signal your eyes, Mr. Booth is present. I see Ms. Anderson, present. And my other colleague, Tracy Moreno, cannot turn on her camera, but I do see her on Zoom. So I will mark her present. So we are in session, thank you.
Thanks for that reminder. And we need a call to order for the Middle School Building Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. I would like to call the Middle School Building Committee meeting to order. I will call roll. Pat Nelson.
Present.
Alexa Anderson. Port Booth. Heather Bout. Justin Cameron. Frank Cannon. Stephen Crane. Peter Faschalis. John Harris. Russ Hughes. Dr. Hunter.
Present.
Matt Johnson.
Present.
Amanda Cohn.
Present.
Charlie Parker.
Present.
Chris Popoff. Matt Root. Chris Popoff, I'm told, is on via Zoom. And Jared Stanton. All right, the Middle School Building Committee is called to order. Thank you, Ms. Ackerman.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates. All right, Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Since this is a joint meeting, I guess the Finance Committee should also move to open. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Christine Reynolds, aye.
Dean Banfield, aye.
Lois Wasoff, aye.
Brian Taylor, aye.
John Hickling, aye.
Peggy Briggs, aye.
Rosha Patel, aye.
Kathy Kukalo, aye.
Greg Goriello. Ray Andrews. On Zoom, Amrit Kumar.
Aye.
Dee Ortner.
Aye.
And Eric Dahlberg.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm pleased to introduce our co-chairs, Dawn Goriello and Pat Nelson, and our Superintendent in Schools, Dr. Laurie Hunter.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. And thank you to the entire Select Board and the Chair of the Finance Committee, Ms. Reynolds, and the entire Finance Committee for having us this evening. We also want to take a moment to say thank you to our entire School Building Committee. We are thankful for their time, their expertise, and their thoughtful engagement in this project to take us where we are today. So I just want to acknowledge all of them. So tonight, we've provided some handouts for those in the room. They are near the entryway door. They are printouts of our frequently asked questions, as well as some flyers that have been produced about the building project. For those that are on Zoom and available to pull open a browser, if I can direct you to our website, cmsbuildingproject.org. At the very top, there's a tab that's called "Public Hearing." And in there, you can find our presentation, the handout of the frequently asked questions, as well as the informational flyers. So please feel free to look through that and follow along while you're at home. So with that, you can advance, please, Dr. Hunter. You can go through this. This is just myself. I'm a licensed architect. I am co-chair on the Building Committee with Pat Nelson. I've been designing public schools in Massachusetts for over 25 years. Pat is the Director of Concord Children's Center, 20 years of experience in education. We're both very invested in the schools in Concord. And I'm an ALCOA parent, and she is a former member of the Willard Building Committee. So lots of experience here. These are just the names of everyone you heard me call "roll," wide range of expertise and experience on our committee, a very large committee and very engaged committee. So thank you again. With that, I think I'm about to turn it over to Dr. Hunter to give us a brief history of how we got to where we are today. Thank you, Dawn. So I think I might be one of the most excited people in the room to feel such a milestone occur, a project that we really had looked forward to and thought we were on some sort of fast track. COVID told us otherwise. So it's been a long, long road to get here, and we're really excited and really looking forward to the upcoming town meeting. So just a little history storytelling of that journey and a reminder of why we are all here. Sandborne and Peabody are dated buildings, as you can see, 64 and 70. And modular is at Sandborne because we're overcrowded there. Peabody was originally designed as an elementary school with open walls, and we've closed those in, I don't know how many years ago. Neither space is conducive to the best learning environment. So... Forgive that little scratch. And so outdated structures, pictures are worth 1,000 words, I think. So you can see the conditions under which some of the infrastructure operates. We're fairly always worried on what could happen next, and you'll see that when we talk on some of the risks that feel present to us all the time, frankly. And obviously, environmentalism and sustainability is a really big challenge for us. So cost of delaying any further in terms of fiscal impacts, annual costs, we do have redundant costs because of the duplication that two building requires. We have ongoing immediate repairs. We carry a line item in the town manager's capital budget, and there's always a risk. And that list is real. We've had things that happen, and we get that call, and we're always hoping they're minor repairs and not going to take us offline for any length of time. But it always feels like it could be a possibility. Educationally, we're just very limited. The space doesn't support our vision, which we'll talk more about in a minute. And again, we're always worried for that interruption. So we established that need, and then in 2016, the school committee formed a Facilities Planning Committee, 15 members. They worked with Feingold Alexander, and they looked at the following questions: the cost to stay in the buildings, options for renovating or to build new. The conclusions in 2018 were, as you can see here, that the buildings were indeed deteriorating and obsolete. It was having impact. There would be significant costs to keep them online. Renovating would be very costly and limited in its impact likely. And so the recommendation from Feingold was that we would proceed with a new building on the Sandborne site, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. The details of that include building on the fields, and you'll see on the site plan, and then demolishing Sandborne once the building's up and running. In 2019, we went to town meeting with an ask for $1.5 million towards a feasibility study and schematic design. It was highly attended meeting and well, easily passed, well over the 2/3 required. The building had an amendment attached to the warrant so that it would be net zero ready. You'll hear more about that as we go. And again, it was very well supported then at the ballot vote as well. And that's been the $1.5 million that's funded the work that's happened since then to get us to tonight. So the Building Committee itself is born. And I'm going to turn it over now to Pat, who's just going to talk through the goals of the project as commissioned by the Building Committee.
Thank you, Laurie. The Building Committee was born in the late summer of 2019. We had a timeline at that time that was disrupted by COVID, but we started back in 2019, summer. The goals for that Building Committee and the project goals were obviously to consolidate the two middle school populations, to create a single-site learning facility that would truly support the educational vision of Concord's middle school educators. Would be a... And the foundation of that goal was the vision, of the vision is the team teaching model that Laurie will talk about a bit more, and to build a sustainable green building. And then finally, to be, to consider and be mindful of the impact to the taxpayer. And at that time, we had, and remember, this was back in 2019, a goal of $80 to $100 million.
So educationally, the vision was actually seated prior to the start of the Building Committee. We did some work on visioning with a small group of parents, students, administrators, teachers, school committee. And these have held, and I think that's pretty exciting, actually, that they could be seated that long ago and hold through the entire project. These eight core principles, and I won't go into detail on each. There's more depth on the next slide that we'll just scan. But I think in the middle, you'll see our central focus. Joy is my favorite word on this entire slide and remains my favorite word in the work we do, making sure it's a great place to be. Sustainability also being a high priority. Security, lasting, which this is a 50-year building we're proposing, so we want to make sure it's going to endure the test of changes in education over time. Rigor, so that our kids are being challenged and really, you know, having high expectations around them. And then these other principles of wellness, and that means the whole child. Mental wellness is a priority for us, choice, so kids are empowered. Balance, so that they're both able to attend to their academics but to their social, emotional needs and such. That they're engaged in not just doing school and complying, but actually loving learning. Collaboration and working together. Flexible, that they can bend and flex and be creative and create and really create projects and solve problems. That it's authentic and has connections to the real world, and that it's inclusive, and that all students have access to the learning environment, to the learning opportunities, and it's really soaring in our schools. I won't go through all of that again. You can see it's outlined there. And I'm going to turn it over to Dawn to talk about our work under feasibility. So Laurie mentioned the $1.5 allocated and approved at the April 2019 Annual Town Meeting, and thought it might be helpful to share with you how we've spent that money and what work has been completed with that $1.5 million that began after that meeting and culminates now as we bring this ask to the Town of Concord. So feasibility began approximately January 20th by the time we hired our Owners Project Manager, Hill International, and our designer, SMMA, with their partners, Ewing Cole. And we brought them on just before, it was like December of 19, so it took some time to establish the committee and bring them on. At that point, we began feasibility study. And what feasibility study does is analyze alternative concepts for construction and then choose a preferred concept. So there were lots of different options. I'm showing some of them at the bottom. We began that process with a dual, parallel process. One is educational visioning and programming, and that's understanding what does the education look like. There's an educational plan that Laurie and her team has put together. It's available on our website for anyone that wants to read it. But it basically describes what they want to teach and how. And all of that translates to space, which is programming. What does each space need to look like, and what size does it need to be? In a parallel effort, there was the evaluation of site conditions and site requirements, surveys, geotech, environmental, Phase 1 analysis, et cetera. So those happen in parallel. Coming out of that, the educational plan will drive the design. So therefore, we developed, not we, but our professionals, developed conceptual design options. And major decisions are made coming out of that. But these are the four final options that came to bear. We ultimately decided on option three, the treetop teams. You'll see more of this. But it's worth pointing out, I'm seeing the timeline at the top. This was the phase in which we were interrupted. We thought we were finished. COVID hit. We knew we needed a lot of community input and transparency and information. So we paused from approximately May of '20 to December of '20. Then we picked back up about a year ago, and this finished, this process finished in May of this year, '21. From there, so I mentioned, we decided on option three, our committee, after much deliberation, if you would move forward, please, Dr. Hunter, we moved into schematic design. And what schematic design does is takes the preferred option and puts together sufficient detail and drawings to establish this project's scope and budget for the proposed project. So this took approximately seven months, from May of this year to recently, November of this year. And lots of decisions made, materials, mechanical systems, daylighting studies, many, many meetings, many, many subcommittee meetings, and a lot of time and deliberation to get to where we are, to put forward a schematic design plan, to come to a reconciled estimate. So that is a high level, what we've spent the last two years working on with the $1.5 million. So now we'll take you quickly through where we are in terms of the design of the building. So this is the site plan itself. You can see the dotted dashed line in red is the current Sandborne building. So that will become Fields, and you can see adjacent and next to that is the design of the new school. And you can see the treetop-ish outline there. It's morphed over time, gotten more condensed and pulled away from the trees a little just so we conserve as much of the beautiful natural environment as possible. And up front, there's parking and the bus loop and access for parents as they're picking up. All the Fields will be returned in kind once Sandborne's demolished. And it really has helped us just appreciate the gifts of this incredible site that we have to work with. And I think you'll see the building's trying to really maximize the opportunity that, you know, the natural environment brings. The building is essentially two different sections. One section, we're calling the public wing, and that's where the common spaces are. It is where a community would have access after school. We'll go into detail into that in a moment. The other side is this academic wing, which will be three stories tall with one floor per grade level. And as we get a little deeper into the design, you can see on the public side, we have a gymnasium that's the size of a full-sized MIAA court. We had a lot of community input and discussion and a lot of engaged Building Committee work on that. We also have an auditorium with 420 seats, another topic that was really one of thoughtful discernation and really taking in the community's feedback and the goals of the space and making sure we were meeting everyone's needs. The cafeteria is a nice, open, bright space adjacent to the library, which is there in purple. We've, from the beginning, wanted the library to feel like the heart of the school, and indeed, it's sitting there central, which feels really like the vision coming to be. And then across from the library there, that pinkish tinted space would be the administrative offices, guidance, nurses, et cetera. On the academic side, which is in green, you can see that this is one floor layout, so this would be one grade level you're looking at. And you can probably see the three broken-out components there, so we'll zoom in on that. And this is where the team model starts to come into form. So each grade level is already on a team. We have three teams at each grade. Right now, they're just struck a concept. Each teacher becomes part of a team, and they collaborate amongst social studies, math, English, and science to form that team, and they share children all day. What we don't have now is the proximity that really will take that vision to fruition and allow them to both do interdisciplinary work, do projects together, and to continue to know students at a holistic level because they also meet as teams, they do some planning as teams, and they talk about children and who they are all day long, and not just who is Johnny in math, but they can talk across content areas. The design includes this team common space, which you'll see central to the four classrooms on each team. And that becomes this really fluid overflow space where teachers can spill kids into that space for projects, collaboration, presentations. And they really, just having been in schools where this is up and running, ebb and flow back and forth from the common space into the classroom. And the goal here is a lot of flexibility so that we can open walls up, we can close walls down, we can have a lot of options as time goes on. Maybe have the whole team meet as an entire team, all four classes together. You can move walls around, and it's just going to be this really amazing space that allows us to take what we've started and maximize it at a new level. The outside, you can see there's a really strong intent of making it naturally... The outside, you can see there's a really strong intent of making it naturally visible and feel like it fits in with the environment around it, so this is the entire length of the building, you can probably see some sense of where the common spaces are and where the academic wing is, and you start to see the connection between the two through the bridge that's there in the center, right adjacent to the main entryway. So if we break and zoom in on that a little bit closer here, this is the common wing, so gymnasium, auditorium, cafeteria, library, on the side where it says Concord Middle School. The middle part there is the administrative building, and then you start to see the entryway in the beginnings of the connector. And then we can zoom into the academic side, and you can start to see the three floors come to be and how that all works together with the connector and adjacency to the public section. So it's a beautiful, beautiful outer, outdoor layout, which also has this ongoing, growing vision of how we use the outdoor space. The, the site there is very sloped, and so we're grateful to our design designers that they were able to creatively see ways to incorporate the slope and make it an opportunity rather than a challenge. And so this is one of those ways with this amphitheater, presentation, learning environment on the slope itself, and we're excited by some of what that'll offer us. You can see, I think too worth pointing out, that the connector, or we've come to call the bridge, is, is highly glassed, so that students are consistently feeling like they're part of that environment, there's a lot of natural light, and it really just brings the outdoors inside. This is a rendering of what an entryway might look like, you can see it's bright, lit, some potential for some wood tones there, open, very inviting, and a, hopefully, a, you know, welcoming hospitable spot for kids as they come in. And then the team common area that I mentioned in the earlier slide, this is what that might look like, you can see there's some production space there with the island in the middle, right, we're expecting to put sinks there, some counter space, there's also spots for kids to work in small groups, some presentation equipment, they can collaborate, they can work together, they can practice whatever they're presenting, they might just put projects together, they, and build, and then they can bring those back into the classrooms and share all the great things they've created and communicate their learning with each other. This is a rendering of what a cafeteria might look like, I think you'll see it's got this nice, warm, inviting feel to it. Of great note to us, and importance to us, is some alternate kinds of seating from our traditional cafeterias, you can see there's some booths there, some bench seating. One of our biggest goals will be to have kids get as many options as possible, not only does this give them options for a lunch environment of different kinds, but it also gives us ways we might be able to accommodate special education needs, we have kids who might have sensory challenges, and a booth is going to be a much better setting for them than trying to accommodate themselves in a very large, busy space, like at the larger tables. So we're excited by all the options it's going to offer, and wanted to be sure people could start to see where some of the common spaces. I'm going to turn it over to Dawn for sustainability.
Thank you, Lori, and I hope Matt Root, I can do this justice, I see Matt, our sustainability, sustainability subcommittee chair in the room, so I will try to be brief on this, and just recognize that Concord has very robust sustainability goals, I'm not going to go through these, but these are really the foundation by which our project set our project goals, as well as the amendment to Article 14 that Dr. Hunter mentioned. So amongst our project, the goals that were established by the Sustainability Subcommittee and our greater group was to, to deliver a healthy indoor environment. With that, we want to inspire a passion for learning, achieve a high performance, energy efficiency, and that EUI stands for energy use intensity, I'll get into that in a moment and what that means, reduce embodied carbon during construction, all electric, per the addendum on Article 14, as well as solar ready. So you will hear more a little bit later from our sustainability director on the solar topic. There, I'm not going to go through all these, but there are multiple, multiple ways in our design, sustainability's been at the forefront from day one in this project design, and there have been many ways in which we are implementing those project goals in the building and throughout the site. So these are a handful of ways that we identified that we are implementing those. And if anyone has follow-up questions, I don't want to spend too much time on this, we had an entire forum that was well-attended a week or so ago, got quite a bit of great questions, and appreciate everyone attending and being engaged in that topic. I mentioned an EUI, that's an energy use intensity, we have from day one been aggressive in our, in our goals, and for good reason, it just means that our building will be very energy efficient. An EUI is basically a metric that's used to evaluate buildings, and you take the annual energy that a building will use and divide it by the gross square footage, and it gives you an EUI number, and the num, these numbers, the lower, the better. So I forget what the exist, oh, it tells me, 135 is the existing sandborne, so you can see we are targeting 25 or better. So we have high expectations for this building and we hope to deliver, so lots of sustainability embedded in this design, we're excited about it. And with that, I'll turn it over to Pat for the community engagement and what we've been sharing out.
Thank you, Dawn. From the very beginning, we knew that we wanted to have as much community engagement as possible, we knew that this was a really expensive project, it's also been a project long time coming in Concord, and I think that our communications committee, spearheaded by Heather Bout, and joined, joining her was Alexa Anderson, did a yeoman's job. Just to, to give you an idea, these are listings of some of the community engagement activities, but in the first 10 months of the project, there were 41 opportunities for people to hear about the project. There were 55 public meetings of the Concord Middle School Building Committee that were also on Zoom, that the folks could come and learn about the project, 52 public meetings of the subcommittees, that's over 100 meetings, 141 scheduled events. We emailed notices to a broad sector of the Concord community, we tried to get beyond the usual suspects, trying to get beyond just the, the parents of students who would be perhaps experiencing this school. We received, from all of this engagement, we received over 300 inbound emails from people with questions and comments, and we've had Middle School Building Committee reports in the Concord Journal throughout. There have been, if, there were 15, I think 1,500 people responded to a survey that we sent out, so there's just no question in my mind that this is one of the most well-put out there to the community projects, much thanks to our communications committee. And I think we're going to go to project cost, which I-
Indeed, we are, which I think is the point tonight, so thank you for bearing with us to do all the work to understand what we're going to be paying for. So in terms of costs, and this has been a focus area through the entire project, I think this committee's been very committed to managing costs, to trying to find that perfect balance of this amazing school for the right price, and I think it's coming, come together, and we're hoping to hear your feedback tonight on that, and Carrie will follow up a little later with the details of what that means to taxpayers, but the, these are the big picture pieces. So we had an estimate in November of 82 million. We spent the last month plus really taking a look at that number through, with our design team and with Hill, and looking at what we could do differently, what we could live without, and you can see that value management total reduction is over 1.7 million, and so we're coming into tonight with a construction budget, which truly is construction, and you'll see the other pieces in a minute, of 80,700,000 or so. That number then is added to with the soft costs, and you can see the list of what's incorporated in soft costs, architecture, OPM fees, furniture and technology, that's, this was my favorite analogy of how to do that, turn the building upside down, anything that falls is furniture and technology, so it's the literal furniture, the literal equipment, et cetera, that really makes it a school. Contingency, I think, is a really important topic tonight, because there's a, a real strong effort to be thorough in a really well-formed contingency number, so there's 4 million in construction contingency, 700-plus thousand in owner's contingency, which brings our total project cost to 100 million, almost $800,000. A lot of great discussions going on with the other boards that we're here with tonight, and talk on how to navigate such a very challenging fiscal environment due to the pandemic, supply chains, et cetera, and really a lot of unknowns. So with great gratitude, we will note that there is another 2 million in a bidding contingency number, that when this project goes out to bid in about a year, should we be over that 108, 100 million, 800,000, there's another cushion there, only for bidding purposes. If we don't need it, which is what we're all hoping, then we will not spend up to the 102 million dollars. So that is a very short version of a really long process and a lot of hard work by a, a really dedicated committee, some really hard discussions at different points to get us to this school that we're really excited about and feel like we tried to stay within the town's goals for us. Just a quick note on other projects and where we're landing in terms of cost per square foot, which is one metric you can use to compare across different schools and different construction, you'll see on the slide from a distance that we understand, you know, that circle and our arrow at the end shows you where we are at, at $562 per square feet, and the intent of the slide is to show you that there are others below us, there are others above us, and that fiscal effort through the whole project has brought us in pretty midstream in terms of comparable projects across the state. So I'm going to turn it over now to Dawn and Pat to wrap up, and I'll just thank everyone as I hand over the mic for the last.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter. I will just add that the chart that she just showed, that Dr. Hunter just showed, is a Massachusetts School Building Authority chart, they track all of the schools that are in their pipeline and get state funding through their grant program. That chart is interactive, if anyone wants to Google MSBA's cost chart, it is interactive, you can hover and it'll tell you all sorts of information, they do a really good job of data collection, and they are a great source to go to for school funding numbers, so I just want to share that. I will give a quick overview of the schedule, like I said, we are finishing up the schematic design, that was the contract for the 1.5 with feasibility and schematic design. If we are lucky enough to have the town, at special town meeting, approve the funding for this, and at the ballot on January 20th and February 3rd, we would move into design development and construction documents. That basically means there's about another year to finish designing the building. A lot of the major design decisions have been made, and that was in the feasibility and SD overview that I gave you, and I know that was quick, but lots, a lot of hard work was done there. What happens now is that the designers move forward and actually detail it, make, you know, design decisions based on more information, and put forward a set of documents that can be bid. So in April of '23, we would expect contractor bids to be due, and from there, we would go into construction approximately May of 2023, and construction would be about a two-year process, which would provide us with a move-in date of April of '25. If anyone's got elementary school-aged children, that means any third grader would move in mid-year. I have a third grader, so obviously I'm tracking this closely, but for reference, so if anyone's got a second grader, they might be the first to occupy full sixth, seventh, and eighth in the fall of '25. And then from there, we would demo the existing sandborne, once the new building is occupied, take down sandborne and construct the fields, and that's approximately a seven-month process, and then the fields would need to start to grow, and that would take a little time, but that's high level, the update on the schedule. And lastly, some important dates, I've said it multiple times, as has Carmen, so just a reminder, January 20th, special town meeting, extensive COVID mitigation, fully accessible, there also will be childcare available for those who need it, and lastly, the ballot at your regular polling facility. So thank you again for bearing with our full presentation, and here are our websites, I think I've mentioned a few, so that folks could follow along, so thank you very much, everyone, and we welcome your questions, Ms. Ackerman.
Thank you so much, that was an excellent presentation, very good, and now-
I'm sorry, I did forget, we're going to hear from Amanda, and then, yes, okay, thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from Amanda Cohn, who's our Director of Sustainability, and she, I think, is joining us on Zoom. Amanda, are you there? Amanda, are you, we don't hear you yet. You see yours-
I am here, I'm getting my screen and everything set up, do you hear me now?
We do, and we see your screen, thank you.
Okay, great. So tonight really is about the middle school building and not about the solar, but we know that a lot of people have questions about the solar, so I want to just give a brief overview of the CMS solar project, and this is really, is what can, is what is going to get us to net zero. So the net zero building is when a building is generating as much energy as being, as being used on site, and so the building that would be voted upon would be net zero-ready for the solar to come at a later date, and so the costs are separate from the proposed article, and CMLP is leading the design and financing of the solar piece. So the current status of this separate project is that CMLP has hired design consultants to go through a feasibility study, which looked at the maximum amount of solar that could be installed on the site, and in that, both rooftop and ground canopies are possible, and you can see some examples on the screen here of what those could look like. And when you look at the aerial view of the site, you can see the parking lot on the outer edges, on, where there would be the canopies, and then on top of the building, where there would be solar on the roof, and again, this is the maximum amount possible, so we're starting from the max and then we'll take away as needed for things like the HVAC system and others that will go on the roof. And with that will come a lot of coordination, if this project does move forward, between the designers that are, that we have for the school building and the designers that we have for the solar. And so on that point, collaboration has already been occurring, both between the designers, but also with CMLP and with the Concord Middle School Building Committee. The project has also been presented to the light board, and I just wanted to point out, I'm building upon something that Dawn said, that one of the major focuses is also making sure that the energy use in the building is really low, so that we can be sure that we can have enough solar on site to cover the amount of energy needed. So the estimated energy use is less than the current high school, and the current high school approximately uses less than 1 megawatt, the max capacity on the site is approximately 4 megawatt, so even if only half of those were to be installed, we should be able to meet the need with this project. So as we begin to think about next steps, and if the warrant article is approved through the process just outlined, CMLP would continue to work with their designers, with the CMS building designers, to then create a system that meets or exceeds the energy needs of the school, and more of that will be easier to figure out as the design continues, so that we know the size that's needed, we know where all the panels can go, and this will also help CMLP figure out the financing. And the goal of CMLP is also to determine the right financing mechanism to ensure equitable benefits to the customer base. So the timing of the solar is likely to continue along the same outline that Dawn showed on the previous slides, and we just want to point out that there is still a lot ahead of us, there would be a year of design, a half a year of bidding, construction docs. There would be a year of design, a half a year of bidding construction docs, and then a year and a half of construction. And so ideally, those two processes may go hand in hand. They may be, for design and construction reasons, be in parallel or not, and that's to be determined in the next phase. And since tonight is a little bit about costs, we wanted to give the public some estimates of what the solar is, and this hasn't gone through the same rigor that Dawn presented. These are estimates of projects that CMLP has done in the past or estimates that they've got from contractors in the past, just to give people an idea of what those additional costs might be. So for both the rooftop panels and the canopy, they're roughly around $2 million each. So the total for solar is 3.9 million, and then the additional battery for the storage on the site would be 4 to 6 million. The solar and the battery could be installed at the same time, and they could be installed separately, and that's why we wanted to break it up like this, because the solar is really what's going to make it net zero, but the battery is going to provide a lot of additional benefit to the school and to CMLP. So those are two of the components, and that is the end of the presentation, but I look forward to answering any comments, and I think Dave Wood is also joining us tonight in case there are any technical questions that we need someone with all of his background knowledge to answer. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda. And we have one more presentation, and then we will take questions for all these presentations. So we are, we will hear now from our CFO, Carrie LaFleur.
Good evening. I'm Carrie LaFleur. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the Town of Concord. I'd also like to introduce one of our guests in the audience, Peter Frazier, who is the town's financial advisor from Hilltop Securities, and Peter is here this evening to help with any questions that might come up from the audience. So next slide, please. So I'm going to briefly cover six topics this evening, some basics about how projects are financed in Massachusetts, talk about the base assumptions, look at our existing exempt debt, talk a little bit about how we smooth the peak debt service years for this particular project if it's approved, some cost savings assumptions, and then some additional information. Next slide, please. So under state law, school construction projects in Massachusetts can be financed for a maximum term of 30 years, and they can be financed in one of two ways, either through level debt or equal principal assumptions, and I think those are both fairly self-explanatory. The Town of Concord has a lot of history, recent history with school construction projects, both within the town and districts that we belong to. In terms of the elementary school projects that the town has financed, we have followed a 20-year term with equal principal. So the payments are higher in the earlier years, but as the principal is retired, the annual payments are decreased. Two of the three projects that we've done, Alcott and Thoreau, also had some MSBA participation, so that made it easier to finance using that particular type of model. The Willard School, however, as you know, was financed 100% locally, and we did still follow that same model. At the high school, at CCHS, that project was financed over a 25-year term using equal principal, and again, there was some MSBA participation. And then Minuteman Tech, we are a small member of that, have a much smaller share of the assessed debt service, and that project was financed over a 30-year term, the maximum term, and they actually have used a mix of level debt and equal principal. So that is something that is also available. Due to the cost of this project, the tax impact modeling assumes a level debt model. Next slide, please. Because all prior CPS projects were financed for a period of 20 years, the base assumption for the financing of the middle school is also 20 years, but as mentioned, it is level debt versus equal principal. The reason for using the level debt assumption is due to the overall project cost and in recognition that the debt associated with the elementary schools will not be fully paid until fiscal '30. Based upon the cash flow analysis that has been provided by the town's OPM, the current and current market conditions, the assumption that is, that is, if the project is approved by the town, that it will be permanently financed over a period of four years. The current interest rate assumption for the 20-year level debt issuance is 2.5% to 3.5%, and using these assumptions, the estimated tax impact at the median assessed value is $1,020 per year. Alternate financing assumptions include financing the project over a term of either 25 or 30 years. The interest rate assumptions here have been adjusted to reflect the longer terms. The estimated impact at median assessed value for a 25-year term is $902 per year, and at 30 years, $835 per year. Because of the magnitude of the project, my recommendation would be that we consider financing this over 25 years using a level debt repayment structure. While this will result in additional interest costs, it provides a more affordable solution to the taxpayer without negatively impacting the town's bond rating. Further, the town would likely have opportunities in the future to refinance the debt if there was interest in a more aggressive repayment of the project. Next slide, please. In order to fully understand how this project will impact your tax bill, it is important to review the tax impacts of the existing capital projects. This slide shows the impact to the tax bill for the existing exempt debt. Note that for a project to be exempt, it must have received specific voter approval at the ballot to raise tax dollars over and above the Prop. 2.5 allowance. The existing exempt debt projects impacting your tax bill include the elementary school projects that were previously mentioned, in addition, the Bus Depot project and the middle school feasibility study, and the high school, and then the Minuteman High School as well. As you can see from this slide, the current year, fiscal '22, the total tax impact for these projects is $977. Again, based upon the current cash flow analysis provided by the OPM, project debt will first appear in fiscal '23 with the full tax impact of the project by fiscal '26. Because the existing debt associated with the elementary school projects will not be fully paid until fiscal '28, taxpayers will bear a significant increase in the tax bill associated with the middle school construction project during the years fiscal '25 to '28. Next slide. In anticipation of this project, Town Meeting established a middle school stabilization fund at the 2020 annual town meeting and transferred $2 million from free cash into the fund. Last month, the Board of Assessors voted to declare $1 million in its overlay account as surplus to be transferred to the middle school stabilization fund at the 2022 annual town meeting. The Board of Assessors has also agreed to take another look at its overlay account balance after the fiscal '22 abatement season. In total, it is hoped that $5 million will be available to smooth the impact of the middle school building project. This slide shows the smoothing impact of a $5 million stabilization fund if used equally over a period of four years. Using the stabilization fund in this manner would result in a reduction of approximately $178 per year at median assessed value. Next slide. However, because the, the impact of the existing debt service, along with the rate at which the middle school construction project is expected to be financed, the best opportunity for smoothing comes from an unequal spread of the stabilization funds. As shown in this slide, the town would not begin to use stabilization funds until fiscal '25, and by doing so, would able, would be able to keep the total exempt debt at median assessed value fairly consistent at about $1,400 per year during the peak years. Next slide. For anyone who has been following the progress of this project, you know that there have been many, many cost savings measures that have been investigated or are being, or are still under investigation. One such cost savings, which will be available, is the operational savings resulting from the consolidation of two buildings into one. This savings has been identified at $548,000 per year and is anticipated to be available in fiscal '26. The value impact of this savings at median assessed value is $78 per year. From a budget mechanics point of view, this adjustment will occur one time, reducing the CPS guideline budget by $548,000 and increasing the non-guidelines debt budget by the same amount. The net effect is that beginning in fiscal '26 and continuing through the life of the project's debt service, $548,000 of the annual debt service payment will be paid within the levy. Next slide. This table shows the overall estimated impact at median value of all exempt debt with the addition of the middle school, assuming the use of the middle school stabilization fund to smooth peak impact during years fiscal '25 through '28, and the capture of the operational savings to offset the annual debt service beginning in fiscal '26. Next slide. This graph displays the same data from the previous slide. In this graph, the blue represents the town projects, and again, the elementary schools, the Bus Depot, and the middle school feasibility study. The gray represents the impact of the Minuteman Tech High School project. The orange represents the impact of the town's assessment to the CCHS building project. The impact of the middle school is represented in solid green. The green striped portion depicts the smoothing as a result of the use of the stabilization fund, and the green hashed portion depicts the reduction in exempt debt as a result of the operational savings. And finally, the, the last two slides. We've had a lot of presentation tonight. So these are some, this is some additional information based on some questions that has been received at the various meetings. So the first question, when will the project be permanently financed? Based upon the estimated cash flow needs in the current interest rate environment, it is anticipated that the project would be, would be financed over a four-year period. However, the town may also use short-term financing during construction if that's deemed more advantageous at the time cash is needed. How will the debt term be decided? So traditionally, the select board and town treasurer or CFO set the terms, but there is a provision under Mass General Law that allows Town Meeting to set the maximum term of financing. So Town Meeting could say anything up to 30 years, but it can't set terms any more specific, just the maximum. If the terms are left to the select board and the town treasurer, the town has the ability to adjust to changing market conditions. So the recommendation would be that Town Meeting not get involved in setting the terms of, of the financing, but that left to the traditional process that we follow. So you might want to know how you can calculate the estimated impact to your exact tax bill. I want to thank our IT Director, Jason Bulger. He put together a really neat tool that you can find at conquerma.gov/calculator, where you can go in and you can put in your, your property's assessed value, and it will calculate exactly based on the 25-year level debt project terms. And if you don't know your assessed value, there is a link there to the assessor's database, and you can look that up as well. So can the debt be refinanced in the future? Municipal debt may only be refinanced at predetermined call dates. Any bond issue for municipal debt in excess of 10 years has a call at 10 years. That's a standard call provision. Any non-standard call provisions, there was some talk about, could we do something at five years? We certainly can set those terms, but it, it tends to have a negative impact on the interest rate, and so that's not necessarily advisable. And then, once the, once issued, there were questions about can the debt be refinanced? And it can be refinanced, but you have to be able to demonstrate a cost savings, an interest cost savings. So unlike a mortgage where you may want to refinance to, to reduce the payments, people, people do do that, you can't do that with municipal debt. Next and final slide. So what are the debt rating implications of a, of a capital project of this magnitude? Obviously, this, this is a large project. It's the single largest project that the town is anticipating, and given all the factors that are considered, it's certainly difficult to say what the rating agency will think about, but the Town of Concord does issue debt on an annual basis, and each year for the last two or three years, we have talked to the rating agency about the likelihood of this project, so they are aware of it, and it has not negatively impacted our rating. We're not even on a, on a negative watch. And we don't expect a project even of this size to negatively impact our rating because our rating is so strong due to the, the factors that are listed on the slide. What would cause a problem or a potential concern is if there is a change, a material change in our fund reserves, a general fund reserve, so free cash. If we go below that 5% threshold or minimum for a AAA-rated community, that would be of concern, or if there were any other issues with liquidity, which is, is never a problem for the Town of Concord. And then finally, the impact on future capital. So the difference in, in the way this is being proposed, level debt obviously does have long-term implications because there's no, you're not able to recapture any savings as the debt is paid off because the payment is level. So that's something, it's certainly not at all uncommon for a school project to be financed this way, but it is something to think about because there obviously will be additional capital needs of the town over the next 20-plus years. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Carrie. So at this time, thank you, everyone, for listening. We are ready for the question and answer section. We will begin with the select board, then the finance committee, then the people who are live here, and then the people on Zoom. I would like to remind everyone, please speak very close to the microphone. If you'd like to come up to that microphone right there, when it's your turn, that would be great. Are there questions from the select board? Matt?
Yes, my question's from Ms. LaFleur, and her presentation on slides nine and 10, and I think also seven, showed the impact of the stabilization fund on years FY '25 through '28, but I'm curious whether those same charts and, and tables reflect the impact in the opposite direction in FY '22 through '24. Because, I mean, essentially, that's what the stabilization fund is doing, is pulling, pulling the burden forward, right? It will presumably have an impact on the taxes in those years in, you know, the opposite direction.
Correct. So if, if I am following you, the, the middle bar, you can see middle school, 25 years level debt, the, the items that are circled in purple, that is the estimated, and we're on slide seven, the, the estimated cost at median for the debt associated with this project. So there would be an increase of $86 at median in fiscal '23, and an increase of 472 in '24. In '25, we have another, another sizable amount proposed to be financed. That would be $857, but to soften that, we would be using 320, or the impact would be $328 at median. Does that make sense?
No, I was looking at the bar below where stabilization fund, 5 million, and it shows the, the negative 3.28, 2.24, et cetera, but I would assume there should be some positive values in the FY '23 and '24, I guess.
So there, there would be, under this proposal, there wouldn't be any use of stabilization-- there wouldn't be any use of stabilization fund in those years because the associated debt services is a relatively low impact. So we would be saving stabilization for the years where there's closer to 100% of the impact.
No, but I was thinking of the impact on the tax bill. That basically, the raising of the stabilization fund in those years would increase the tax bill in those years. And is that reflected? See, because we were looking at the impact on tax bills starting with FY '25, but I assume, again, if we're needing to raise an additional $3 million bucks, that it would have some impact in those years.
Sure, okay. I apologize for misunderstanding your question. So $2 million in the stabilization fund now that was funded with free cash, $1 million to be placed in to it funded by overlay surplus. The other $2 million right now, we're hoping will come from a combination of overlay surplus and/or free cash, and we're not proposing to increase taxes to go into the stabilization fund in either '23 or '24. That certainly is something that could be considered, but I think the thought is that, that the stabilization fund would be funded with free cash or overlay surplus.
Okay, so it's sort of coming out of the extra that we have, the free cash. We always seem to have a little extra. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions from the select board? Linda?
So thank you to everyone who's worked on this over a long period of time. I've been to many of these meetings and heard these discussions and know how difficult, as well as in-depth, they've been. My question, I wanted to revisit just a little bit about the sustainability goals, which I applaud. And if I understood correctly, it is difficult to determine at this point whether or not the implementation for the net zero ready and work that proceeds related to that will occur in coordination with construction or later, if I understood correctly. And that's to be determined. Is that correct?
If I may clarify, the net zero ready is in the 108, 100 million, 800,000. It provides the additional structure needed for future photovoltaic solar on the roof. It provides the electrical infrastructure, all the conduits and the ability to electrically connect it. All of that is embedded in our design, in our number. But what is not are the actual panels and the foundations that are required if there are panels in the covering, canopies covering the parking.
Thank you for that.
But the net zero ready is in our number, and it's been part of our project along the way. Great question. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. And so then, the second part of what I just wanted to make sure I understand correctly, and that is, this has been presented to the CMLP that the, and there were some cost estimates that were provided for us this evening, and that the financing for that will be determined by CMLP to the best effect for the ratepayers.
Yeah, I was wondering if Dave Wood is avail, oh, there he is.
Dave Wood, the director of the light plant. The financing of that and the way we go approach that would be determined if this project is approved. So we did the, you know, the schematic designs and all that to see what we could get, but there's a lot of steps that we have left to do. And, you know, how we approach the financing on our side would be separate.
Thank you.
Dave, if you could, Dave, if you could stay there a minute, I have a related question for either you or Amanda. So I heard, if I heard Amanda correctly, she said the maximum capacity was about 4 megawatts, but this school would probably only need about 1 megawatt. So what I'm wondering is, if there's a surplus, if you built out the whole 4 megawatts and then we could have a surplus, could that be a revenue offset to this project? Or could it be a savings for ratepayers?
So that's some of the pieces that we haven't got to yet. There's a cost to install the array and all that. And then, what would it cost per kilowatt hour, you know, for us to purchase it? But the surplus would go out onto the system, and it would go out to the other ratepayers as well, the excess. So, you know, we're looking at that. We're factoring in a battery, and the battery is to help offset the peaks. So that's all part of our plan, and that's our approach.
So your approach would be that if there was a surplus, it would probably go back to the ratepayers, but not necessarily be a revenue offset for this project?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's great. Are there questions from Henry or Susan on Zoom? Don't see any yet. Let's go on to the, whoop. Henry?
Question I have to ask is, does the plan involve any consideration of what will be done with the existing PBD property in order to help finance the, both the original cost of the project and the ongoing debt service for the project?
Who would like to take that?
I'm happy to. To the best of my knowledge, and I am not a financial person, so bear with me, but my understanding is that we cannot turn that building over until April of 2025. We need sixth graders to continue to be educated in that building until that time. At that time, we will turn that building over to the select board and the town and return it to the inventory of buildings that the town manages. But, and at that point, it's out of our control, but it is needed until April of 2025. Therefore, it cannot be sold or used ahead of the borrowing required for this project.
Thank you.
Also, I think it's worth noting that we did look at this when we were looking at, and when we had our forum on this issue. And I think what we concluded was both the timing issue as well as the relatively modest net value that you could gain from this property really makes it not a very large factor in any of the, you know, possible scenarios. And in fact, we anticipate that there are many other competing potential uses for this property that might be municipal uses. So we might not get any new revenue, you know, out of that site. So it's probably prudent not to include it in our planning at this point. Maybe someday, but it'll be more like a bonus that comes.
Right, okay. Susan Bates, if you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much. But actually, I had a comment about the PBD site. And I agree, there are competing, there are many possible uses. And I'm reminded of the meeting earlier this week about ARPA funds that involved a number of communities. And Lexington had mentioned that their biggest problem with affordable housing is the cost of land. So I think that's certainly one of the options for PBD, but there are many others as well. So we'll have to see.
Yeah, most of the PBD site is zoned residence A, which means it's very low-density housing that, you know, if it was a normal development instead of a PRD, would be supported.
Okay, so that's down the road. We're not going to count that at all right now. Now we'll turn over to Chris Reynolds and the finance committee for your questions.
Thank you. I have another question on solar. So if, it sounds like we're early in the process. There's a fair amount of costs associated with putting it in. The building assumptions, cost assumptions that we've made and the savings that we have from operations, do they rely on that, an electrical cost that's low due to solar? No. Okay, so it's not in there? Okay, it's not in your numbers? Okay, good. And the $10 million or so that you're estimating, since it's very early, I assume that's a pretty early estimate?
Yeah, those are based on current prices, so they could come down. But the reality of it right now, that's where the pricing is for our storage and batteries, I mean, and solar.
Okay. So if it ended up in a couple of years when we figured out that this was not feasible from your ratepayers' perspective, we would have the building as it is without solar? That's where we'd be?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, give me a mic.
I have a related question on the solar array, similar to Teri. The ability to have excess production, isn't it true that there are programs where the production of electricity can be used to pay for the cost of the panels as opposed to returning, some return to the ratepayers?
Yeah, so, you know, that would, we, we wouldn't, we would be retired any attribute that comes with it. So we wouldn't be getting revenue from the solar attributes at all because then it wouldn't be clean energy because we'd sell that to someone else. So we don't do that.
It's a complex topic. Probably best take it offline.
I'm sorry, I'm in the renewable energy solar field. I am in the field, so I am.
But selling the REX to someone, that's how they pay for it. And we wouldn't sell the REX because otherwise, it wouldn't be clean power anymore.
I think there's probably a lot of people who are not familiar with the terminology. You might, Kathy, you might want to touch base with Dave after the meeting.
Yeah, I just want to point out that this committee has really, really dug deep to bring us this building. So I'm very proud of the work they've done, and I've been the observer from the finance committee for the last nine months. And so I've been present while the sausage had been made, and it's really been an impressive process to get where we are today. But there are three pieces of the project that are still sort of loose ends, and we're not quite at the $100 million number that the select board and the finance committee showed some desire that we meet. So those three items are potential for an acoustical fence, a pressure pump to make sure that we have enough water pressure from the town's water system to the event of a fire, and also the management of the soils on the site, which are, these run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So these are open value management items, and I'd just like the committee to speak to how those items are going to be, you know, aggressively managed to try to get us to the $100 million number that we're trying to manage to.
I can speak a little bit to that, and then I may ask the professionals to elaborate. The mechanical fence is actually a mechanical screen. It's on top of the roof, and what it does is acoustically separate the rooftop units and the air handlers that are up on the roof from any additional noise that neighboring homes may hear. And until we do an ambient noise study and understand what is there, we cannot take any more mechanical screen away in the event that we may take out more than we need to diffuse the noise that the mechanical systems are making. So further along in the process, we'll do the noise, the acoustic test, and then we can better determine the exact amount and where it will land on the building that, you know, may affect abutting homes and neighbors and damper any sound that the mechanical system will make. On the fire pump, that, again, you have to do a pressure test. We're assuming the worst-case scenario, that we will need one. If there's enough pressure in the lines and we don't need a fire pump, then we do not need to spend that money. But we have not done that test yet. And lastly, the soil. We have a lot of soil on this site and a lot of hours, I would say, spending talking about soil. We have conservatively said that we can spread soil on some, on our existing site as well as a property or two in town that is looking for soil. But until we get into the ground with more geotech and borings, a deeper dive into what is actually in the ground and understanding if that soil is good or not, we were not comfortable taking any additional savings, and we may have to truck it away. So we weren't comfortable saying that, yep, the soil's good. We'll be able to use X amount of it. Until we do more testing, we don't know. So our committee worked really hard, lots of discussions, and basically decided we would take the conservative route and assume the worst-case scenario in all three cases. And if it proves to be that we don't need it, then we will not spend that money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, Prashar Patel, finance committee. So first of all, again, echoing what Dean said. You guys have spent countless hours. The design, I think, is great. You hit the target as close as you could from trying to make an estimate from three years ago. Generally speaking, I support what you're, the direction you're going and proposing. I guess I want to go to PBD for, back for a minute. We've lived in town for about three years. I remember one of the first town meetings I went to. Excuse me. There was some land that was given to the town, and then that required further development. Folks complained, rightfully, wrongly, I'm not quite sure, that, hey, we didn't know about the cost of improvements on the land when we agreed to accept what we thought was free. So I want to go back to PBD, and I understand it'll revert back to the town. And we heard statements, well, we don't know whether we're going to be able to generate revenue, et cetera. I guess my question to the select board or anyone else is, can we acknowledge to the citizens that there may actually be a cost at the end of the day, three or four years from now, depending on what use we want to make of the land and the building? So that folks are aware now, and we warn people now that, yeah, there may be some costs so that people aren't surprised three or four years later when capital improvement or something else shows up as a cost to what they thought was buildings coming over from the school ostensibly free. That's all. Thank you.
Well, one thing I can offer, Prashar, is that any action to use the site would have to be approved by town meeting. So at that time, you know, four years from now or however, whatever many years from now, the options would be presented, the benefits, the costs, and town meeting would have a say in that.
And I guess just want everybody to be forewarned that that might be coming down the pike. That's all.
But if it.
Again, I support where we're going. I'm not, this is not a complaint. I think it should be fair warning to folks. Four years from now, people don't say, well, you didn't tell us. And now I think we're talking about it, and people are.
Well, I think this is why it's a good idea to separate the PBD question from the middle school building project question. Because if there was a cost to the town, that cost would be associated with some new future use. And it would be something that we would take into account in evaluating that future use. So we might be able to get some revenue if we just decide, hey, we'll, we'll sell it to a developer, and they'll put housing on it according to the zoning. But if we don't, and we decide we want to use it for a municipal use, yeah, there'll be costs, but they're costs in any municipal project, and we'll evaluate them at that time.
Hi, I'm Mary Hartman. First of all, I want to say the school looks beautiful. I used to be jealous and wish I had kids that were going to go there, and now I wish I was going to go there.
Same.
But I am a little reluctant to approve a project this big when I don't know the cost of the energy systems. And we've been told tonight, or what I heard tonight is the cost is going to be something like 8 to 10 million. And we were told that the CMLP is going to work on the financing. And I guess I would just like some assurance that the cost is not going to be, we're not going to come back to the town and expect the general fund to somehow support the solar PV panels or the batteries. So can, can we hear that assurance tonight or not?
I could try to take this, I mean.
I think this, do you, do you guys want to try? I think this, do you, do you guys want to try and answer that?
I mean, we can only say what is in our purview. And so I can't say anything about the solar panels. I can only say that the cost to pay for electricity within the building would be in the operations cost for the school, unless the solar array is put in place and there's an agreement with CMLP.
I mean, the solar project is a separate enterprise from the school. The school needs to have power, one way or another. What we'd like to do is that the school's site be net zero, meaning that it's producing as much energy as it's consuming. So that's the reason to cite the panels there versus anywhere else. But the solar project is going to need to be an investment that's going to pay for itself, right? It's a, it's a initiative of the municipal light plant. They're hoping to bring us energy at a cost-effective basis. They found a site that doesn't cost them any money because it's a municipal site and they just need to buy the equipment. So, you know, they'll do it at the speed and with the scale that makes financial sense. But it's really about co-location to achieve the net zero term that's associated with this project.
Okay, so maybe if I thought of it as the school isn't responsible for making, building their own power plant, so to speak. They're just, they have an opportunity or facility.
To host a power plant.
Where the enterprise fund now can come and do that and sell the power back to them. Is that the right way to think about it?
Yeah, and they're going to sell power to them one way or the other, but might as well sell the power that's sitting on their roof.
Right.
Got it, okay, thank you.
What about folks on Zoom? So Amrith, Eric, or Dee? Either of you have a question for the Building Committee?
I have nothing. I just want to say thank you very much to the committee who's worked so hard on this project and thanks for, thanks for all the time you've spent on it so far.
No questions? And ditto for all the remarks that have been made about the success of this project.
No questions from this end. Looking forward to hearing from the public.
Right, and that's next. I did see Amanda, your, did you want to add something from Zoom? I saw you come across.
Yeah, thanks, Teri. I just wanted to also reinforce that CMLP is on target to be 100% renewable by 2030. So the solar is great, there are a ton of benefits to that. But even without the solar, this school is going to be carbon emission free. And so the solar, when we get to 2030, is really a bonus. So I just wanted people to keep that in mind and also wanted to give kudos to CMLP to being on track to reaching that goal by 2030. Because this school is going to be emission free even without the solar in 2030. And we're going to be able to do both, but wanting people to keep that in mind.
Thank you. And at this time, are there people in the audience in the room here who would like to come up to the microphone and ask questions? Well, maybe you'll think of some, but seeing none right now, we will turn to the Zoom participants. If you have a question on Zoom, please raise your hand or your virtual hand.
I've got it.
Okay, Carlin Reed.
Okay, hi, Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End. The question I have regards the value management that was done for this project. I understand that the actual motion presented at special town meeting will be less than what is presented in the warrant. And that motion reflects the omission of several items, one of which concerns me. And I'm going to ask that you, that you put it back in if possible. And that's for the maker space projects that were eliminated during the value management. Is it possible, and I'm hoping it is, to put back maker space into the educational plan? Because I don't think that should have been removed during the value management. Thank you, that's it.
Dr. Hunter, looks like you want to.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that, thank you, Carlin. So the, a couple of spaces were reduced quite a while ago, actually before the value management, as we were still in schematic design. We've worked really hard and congratulate SMMA, who's on the remote part of the call, and you and Cole, they're partners, for helping us to figure out how to accommodate the maker space needs without the actual space itself. So the team common areas that we've described are going to have components of that, as will the library. So I'm very comfortable with where we've landed and know those same activities are going to happen just in a different space than we had originally envisioned. So I really appreciate your comment, Carlin, and I think we're in a good place.
Okay, our next question is from Pamela Drit.
Thank you. I was wondering if the possibility of using our electric school bus fleet as mobile backup battery assets, both for balancing the grid as well as mobile generators, is that being considered anywhere? And question number two is, would a green roof under the solar arrays on the roof be possible? Because it would both reduce the cooling and heating needs of the building below and increase the output of the solar panels above. And do we have regenerative agriculture, educational opportunities, such as a greenhouse or gardens or such like? That's question number three, so.
Okay. Dr. Hunter, you look like you can take some of those questions.
I can take a couple of those, I think. We've definitely had some very informal conversations about the potential for what could happen over at Knox Trail as we expand the electric bus fleet. We're at three, so that's a minimal opportunity so far. But that is certainly a priority of the school committees as we can figure out how to manage the, you know, cost of the electric buses, which right now is at $300,000 a bus. So we're making our way to that. I think Pamela, you're right, it should be kept in mind. It's, it's on the edges of the conversation. I think the opportunity for greenhouses and things like that is absolutely on our radar. There is a number of outdoor classroom spaces built into the design, so that'll be the starting point. We've had conversations in the past with even Concord Ed Fund on greenhouse space at the high school that probably will be the same conversation as the new middle school, if the project goes forward, would come online. So we would love those kind of opportunities for our kids and for what they could give back to the, to the school in general and have a real nice cycle there. So thank you for that. I'm not sure who to turn to for the third question.
Green roof?
I can sort of answer it in that I've done plenty of green roofs and I've done plenty of solar-ready roofs. I've never done them in parallel. So the best answer I can give is that we can ask our design professionals to investigate that.
Thank you, please do.
Okay, thank you. Do we have more questions from the people on Zoom?
So I see Gail Hyer.
Gail Hyer. Thank you, Matt.
Hi, thanks so much. This is Gail Hyer. I'd like to make a comment about telecommunications and internet access. Based on what I've heard at the many meetings that I've attended, there is no plan to take full advantage of the fact that Concord has its own fiber optic network. One of the benefits of fiber is that teachers or students could, if the building is wired with Ethernet cables, connect directly to the fiber network for the fastest possible internet connections. Fiber has been called a future-proof technology, so it's important for a building that's going to last 50-plus years to not rely solely on wireless connectivity, but instead take full advantage of the town's fiber network by wiring the building with Ethernet. So I don't know if that plan is part of the scoping or if there's an opportunity going forward to make sure there's space for wiring and making this building truly, you know, up to the state of the art.
Okay, thank you for that question. Who would like to take that?
Yeah, I'll answer that. We certainly have heard some of the question in the past. And at this point, we are not planning on a hardwired building. We're running all of our schools on wireless infrastructure and doing so successfully. I'm sure it'll be an ongoing piece that we review, but right now, we're planning on wire.
Okay. Are there other people on Zoom?
I don't see anyone else with a raised hand at this point.
Okay, is there anyone else on the Finance Committee, Select Board, live in the audience? While we're double-checking here, on behalf of everybody, let's, let us give this whole team a round of applause for their incredible. I'd also like to give a big shout out to Mark Pauly, who has made this sound absolutely fabulous. So just a reminder that the special town meeting will be January 20th at the high school and the ballot vote will be February 3rd. So if there are no other questions, I guess we need a roll call vote for each of the four committees to adjourn. Would the School Committee like to go first?
Sure. So Concord School Committee will adjourn. Mr. Booth? He's there, I see him.
Yes, he said aye, yeah.
Alexa Anderson? Yep, okay. Ms. Morano? And myself, aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the Middle School Building Committee?
Thank you. Pat Nelson?
Aye.
Alexa Anderson?
Aye.
Port Booth?
Aye.
Heather Baut?
Aye.
Dustin Cameron?
Aye.
I don't think Frank Cannon ever joined us, nor did Stephen Crane. Peter Fischeles?
Aye.
John Harris?
Aye.
Oh, hey, John. Russ Hughes?
Aye.
Oh, hey, Russ. Dr. Hunter?
Aye.
Matt Johnson?
Aye.
Amanda Kohn?
Here. Aye.
Thank you. Charlie Parker?
Aye.
Chris Popoff?
Aye.
Hey, Chris, Matt Root?
Aye.
Thank you. And Jared Stanton?
And I'm an aye.
All right, thank you. And the Finance Committee?
So Teri, are we closing the hearing or just closing our groups?
People move to close the public hearing.
Okay, well, all right, so we're going to have to go around again then, huh?
No, no, not with them, they're all set.
Close the track here, okay.
All right, so I have to do, I'm going to do a roll call close in com for now and then we'll do the hearing, okay. Chris Reynolds? Aye.
Dean Danfield?
Kathy Cuculo? Aye.
Prashar Patel? Aye.
Brian Taylor?
Peggy Briggs? Aye.
Lois Wassoff? Aye. Mary Hartman? Aye.
John Hickling?
Okay, and on Zoom, Amrith Kumar?
Aye.
Eric Dahlberg?
Aye.
Dee Ortner?
Aye.
Ray Andrews? Greg Guriello? Thank you. And the Select Board?
Move to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Second?
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson? Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.